To open a public hearing for a donation of $25,000 from the Jack and Dorothy Byrne Foundation for Adult Education. Any additional information about this?
So we have a $25,000 donation for the Jack and Dorothy Byrne Foundation for our adult education program.
Great, so we are grateful to them for supporting our adult education program, especially because we did not know if there was going to be funding at all, so them stepping in. Does anybody have any questions about that? Okay, we will close. And then we will close the public hearing and call the regular meeting to order at 6:31. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. All right, public comment will occur during the public comment portion of the meeting and is done via raising your hand remotely or in person. During public comment, once acknowledged, please state your name and words so that it can be included in the minutes, and please limit your time to three minutes. Public comment is governed by policy BEDH. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
There is none.
Okay. And just FYI, we are going to be having a short non-public at the end of announcements. So we will open the floor up for public comment. Is there any public comment in the room? No? Yes? You can come on up to the mic.
Leah Walcott, is this on?
Yeah.
Okay. Leah Walcott, Ward 2, just here to show my support of the cellphone ban and just offer any support that I can. And I just, my husband and I were just chatting this morning about a few things to consider. One thing that my son has needed through high school with his phone is Snapchat, and we were all against Snapchat in the beginning of high school and tried to keep it off his phone, but for team communication, that hasn't been possible. So I'm just wondering how we'll deal with that as a district, the communication from coaches down to the captains. Is it going to be like a school announcement? And how are the kids going to be? How is that communication going to work? And from a front office standpoint, I'm kind of overwhelmed with like the amount of the time it will take for fielding all the questions from parents and parents calling in to contact their kids. I'm happy to, you know, talk with anyone about like how that's going to work out and help in any way that I can. Also, driver's ed, when my son was in driver's ed, the teacher would contact him directly. So that's just another thing to think about. And I'm just in full support. I think kids, teens talking in the hallway will be excellent. I don't know what the hallways look like now. I hope to sub in the high school this year, but I'm very excited about this, so. Thank you for all the work.
Thank you very much. Is there any comment online?
If you are online and would like to have public comment, please raise your hand and you will be called upon. There's no public comment online.
Okay. And just FYI, Jessica is online, but she's on a bus, so she's not going to be talking unless we have to say a vote of some kind, so just wanted to let everyone know that that is where she is. Okay, so we'll come back to public comment in a minute. Correspondence.
There are not any.
Okay, great. All right, so moving to our consent agenda, we need a motion to approve the minutes from the June 16th meeting.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the June 16th board retreat.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by John, second by Tia. Are there any corrections or comments on the minutes? None?
There was one thing. Let me just pull it up, sorry. On the top, sorry. There was a motion that was a little strange.
You've got to get your mic closer to your mouth. I cannot hear you at all. Oh, no, don't turn that off. It's so hot. It's so hot. It's okay, it's not that, it's just the mics. Yeah, we can put that on. Yes, it's so hot. Richard just needs to put his mic closer to his mouth, he'll be fine.
Yeah, sorry about that. Can you hear me now? It was in Section 12, a motion was made by Richard Forberly to approve he changes to the language in the LDS non-resident student contract. I just thought that should be the changes to the LSD non-resident student contract.
Yep.
That was all I caught.
Great. Anything else? All right, all those in favor, we're going to have to do a roll call vote because Jessica is mine, so Kevin? You just turned it off. Now you turn it back on.
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Tia?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Joe?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Leila?
Yes.
And Jessica, if you can? It's fine, the connectivity is probably bad too. All right, great. Thank you. All right, we will move on. Jessica? Jessica? I hear you. But not really.
Got a turn signal?
Okay. Yeah, she is on a bus. All right. Okay, moving on to the SAU leadership team update.
Good evening, supplemental. I put out a strategic plan board report. My intention is to do a monthly strategic plan board report, which will happen at the second meeting of each month. I started this month just because we have a back-to-back meeting. So I just wanted to give you some highlights about the work that we've been doing on our strategic plan that we just passed. So under grow our students. Next week, on the 18th and 19th, we have a district-wide leadership team meeting to unpack the strategic plan and develop school and departmental action plans. Each school will present their goals at the September board meetings. We have also printed copies of the Visioner of Learner and Graduate for every classroom so we can start to get the communication out. Our policy committee, as you will see tonight, has been working really hard to update our policies to comply with the 306 rules, which are really grounded in competency-based education. And back to our strategic plan, competency-based education was really evident in year two, so we'll be moving some of that work to year one. Also, next week, you'll see coming from a public hearing, the sixth grade team at the Lebanon Middle School has applied and received a grant for an outdoor project-based learning experience focused on the Masoma watershed. This initiative is a great example of learner-centered pedagogy, integrating all of our four aspects of our profile of learner while also getting our students in-place-based outdoor learning opportunities. So I'm excited to be able to highlight and celebrate similar experiences throughout the year. Growing our educators, tonight you'll hear from Karen Dubois, who will talk about some of the professional development opportunities that happened this summer. In the fall, some of our administrators will be going to the Leadership Institute for Transformative Education. It is a conference and site visits to promote learner-centered policies and encourage leadership development and risk-taking and innovation, which is directly related to strategic plan and goals. Growing our systems tomorrow, sorry, tomorrow. Next week, you will hear from Ben Nester, our Director of Student Services, but we have formed a new partnership with Cartwheel, which is a free online therapy program for high school students. This is going to start in the 25, 26 school year, so we're hoping this will improve mental health services and provide timely and confidential support for our students. Tonight's agenda includes the first reading of our revised class size policy, also an update from our business administrator on the SAU exploratory committees. Again, we've started this work on growing our systems and you will be having a report out monthly. Finally, growing our family and community partnerships. Tonight, you're going to hear from our Director of Technology on our new website. I hear you're going to get a sneak preview of that, and that should be going live this week. Our superintendent newsletter has been reformatted to incorporate language from the strategic plan, which will be focusing, highlighting our work on growing our students and educators. Also, at next week's meeting, our Director of Communication and Community Relations, Jack Rooney, will provide a more detailed update on the initiatives to strengthen our connections with families and community partners. I know some of you were able to meet her before the meeting, but I'd like to have Megan Preventer stand up. She is our new Assistant Director of Facilities, and we are really excited to have her join our team. So this will be our new format, and it will be included in your packets going forward.
Great. Does anybody have any questions for Amy? Busy summer, thanks. Appreciate the updates. Okay, that brings us to the business administrator's update.
Oops, I have a couple more, actually, yes.
I'm looking at the wrong thing. Grant update.
So we have received notifications on our first allotment of funds for all approved grants except adult education. We are still awaiting that allocation for that program, although they do say that it is coming. Our adult education program began on July 1, and we have been utilizing our general funds to cover the expenses in the interim to its approval. As noted in our public hearing tonight, we did receive a grant from the Byrne Foundation for the adult education, so certainly we will be able to use that after that is approved. And the DOE has not indicated any timeline of when those funds will be released. Finally, my update on the 306s, as I touched on them in my strategic plan update, the 306s have been approved. The 306 legislation has gone to the New Hampshire School Boards Association, so you'll see many of those policies tonight for the first reading. We do have a policy for next meeting, the parent bill of rights, that will go directly to the board per legal to suspend our rules. And I'm hoping to get together with our local superintendents to offer a 306 update for parents and community members who are interested in some of the curriculum changes and expectations going forward. So the big change for graduation requirements that had people concerned actually don't go in place into the 26, 27 school year, so our EC committee, Policy Committee, will be working on those changes to the graduation requirements, and we'll be able to have those discussions during our budget meetings. And that concludes the superintendent update.
Now, does anyone have any? Okay, great. Moving on to the business administrator update.
Good evening, good to see you all. First thing is the SAU Working Group is what I'm calling it. We spent some time trying to get members lined up, especially from the West Lebanon Revitalization Committee, that took a while. So our first meeting is now set for Thursday, next Thursday, at 1:00 PM. It'll be on Google Meet, and Kevin and Joe are serving for the board. I think Kevin's going to, I don't expect that nine people can attend other meetings at the same time, but I don't, as I said, I don't think it'll be a super-heavy lift. The idea is to come up with, to really brainstorm with it, what you could do with the SAU building and make a recommendation to the board. So I put an agenda together and put some preliminary thoughts from my head out, and we'll be meeting at 1:00 a week from tomorrow.
Tim, I just wanted to add that I was approached by Rebecca Owens at the city, who informed me of the grant that they had for the preschool at the airport district, so they have, I think it's over a million dollars, and they are now looking, I'm not sure they're going to be able to fundraise that whole money to build that project, so they are looking at community partners in expanding preschool options. We will probably talk about that within our SAU exploratory committee, and then when our city manager comes on board, we'll continue to have that conversation to see how the school district potentially expand our options as well.
Great. I asked John to put a list together of stuff, though it's been a very busy summer, as it always is. One thing that's not on the list that we noticed when we all walked in are the shades up top. John said, oops, I forgot to put that on there, so that's a big deal. So appreciate the facilities department keeping us from wearing sunglasses.
I just want to say a personal thank you for that, because I do not have to wear sunglasses in these meetings until October and May. I appreciate that a lot.
I didn't actually notice it because it was cloudy, and I didn't think to look, but thank you for pointing it out. Brilliant work.
We were excited when we all noticed together. So just quickly going through this, at the SAU building, you see some pictures, I printed them in color, but it could be online if you want to see them digital. The gym floor was done a few weeks ago, it looks amazing. So that's going to be great as an asset, well, fits into the SAU discussion, but I don't know if it's been done in 40 years, it was really bad. The boiler replacement, the boiler is in, it's not complete yet, they are coming back, I think in a week or two to finish, you would know the details on that. But the boiler itself is in, tanks are all set, so we're nearing the end of that, and just to remind everybody, that's a new steam boiler that can be converted to hot water if we go that way in the future. Runs on propane, so oil is going to be officially off the campus. Mount Leb, Room 12 renovation, that's continuing our usual project. Hallway improvements, I was over there when they were doing that, so we pulled up cracked tiles and stained carpet and put new ultral flooring and rubber ramps. It's just, I was over there before the new stuff was down, but it was great to see the old stuff gone. And we put new windows in five classrooms. So all those things, I won't, windows don't make a huge difference in energy savings that people think they do, but it's still, you'll feel it more than anything. Oh, there's some pictures on the next page of all the stuff that's done in the hallways, looks really cool. Hanover Street, another room renovation, entrance improvements, we're working on that, that is using some of the remaining money left over from the project, we had a discussion a lot of times, so we went back and forth a lot on what we're going to do. Probably already saw some landscaping if you've been over there. The biggest thing coming up is new exterior doors. As far as the concrete ramp, that's super pricey to do what we wanted, so we're putting it up, making it look nice. So it's kind of a mixture of brand-new and revitalizing the old, you know, good gym floor sanding and refinishing that was done just like we did in the SAU, gets done every decade or so. Rear parking lot improvements, again, there's nothing changed there, but we've talked, we're talking the pathways about designing a plan that was in accordance with the board's direction. Lebanon Middle School, the wall removal and grading, this actually goes back a couple years where we talked about the, we got it done right under the wire, but it was actually, it wasn't discussion for this end of year, but the previous end of year, there was a wall out here as a leading tower of Lebanon Middle School. So that was fixed. We put some, did some electrical work for robotics and art rooms, and rooftop classroom is in the design phase, as we talked about. And at the high school, asbestos abatement, new siding, two B garage siding repairs. We did some work in the fields at Athletic, we did a cafeteria roof, which was discussed in, that'll be a cap reserve request that you'll see coming forward. And cafeteria tables. So a lot, a lot going on, a lot continues to go on, but I don't know, we basically knocked out just about everything on the end-of-year list, except there's some vehicles that have to be bought and stuff, but that's not facility, still working on it.
Just a couple of comments on this, this is great to see. Is this something that can be made available publicly?
Sure, yeah. I got it from John, I think Tuesday afternoon, I just sent it to Amy, so we can.
I did put it like in our board packet after, but this will be added to our new website.
Exactly.
So we can do that.
So that rolls into that.
Absolutely.
I was going to say, just the picture of the SAU gym is, gets me excited. Spent many hours in there, and that looks beautiful. That's impressive. Impressive transformation.
And I'd like to thank the facilities department, John and Megan, certainly with the addition with Megan, they're able to do much more of these projects and outward-facing documents, which I'm really excited about, to kind of celebrate all the good work that we do to put inside our buildings that often sometimes don't get highlighted, so.
Absolutely.
I wanted to share that multiple people have noticed the Hanover Street School entrance improvements and were commenting on that, like, oh, did you see, oh, did you see? So big thank you to John and Megan for sure.
Great to see the new doors.
Anything else for Tim? All right, thank you. That brings us to Karen, Director of Academic Opportunity and Engagement. You just turned it off. There you go.
Sorry. Hi, everyone. I have a summer programming update followed by a brief update on changes to the reporting of graduation rates in the state of New Hampshire. Our summer programming was a big success. This summer, a total of 37 high school students participated in our summer program, including 28 students rising to grades 10 through 12, five rising ninth graders, and four structured skills students, earning a total of 32 recovery credits. Seven students regained eligibility for fall co-curricular activities, and eight of our students took more than one class. Our Rising K-8 Summer Program moved to the Hanover Street and Lebanon High School campus, which was a successful change this year. Serving 115 students, this program provided general education classes that integrated special education and academic support services. The Title I Afternoon Program further supported students in grades 2 through 5, providing whole group instruction and targeted interventions. Highlights included building lemonade stands, multilingual learners authoring personal journey stories, staged performances, geometric house building, outdoor learning, and lots of other project-based activities. Finally, our Beginnings Preschool Program at Mount Lebanon School is currently underway in its second week, serving 19 students this year, with daily acclimate, oh goodness, I cannot say this word, daily great activities, arts and crafts, and structured physical play. I have been treated to daily updates from our program director, Elizabeth Bailey, who is the Assistant Principal at Mount Lebanon School. The photos are amazing. These kids are having a great time, and it really does help support them in preparing them for the school year at the preschool level. Finally, our summer has also included curriculum work to support, among other things, our new middle school schedule, including essential arts curriculum development, seventh and eighth grade English curriculum work and alignment, fifth grade humanities course development, and assorted high school projects, including the development of a faculty workshop that will be implemented peer-to-peer at LHS in our return-to-school days, addressing the upcoming cellphone ban and implications for instruction for our faculty who use some of those devices that we now won't have on hand. This workshop will help them understand workarounds and other technology routes to make sure that students have the same rich learning experiences. Finally, we advanced plans for our vertically-aligned K-8 civics curriculum, including compliance with the patriotic exercises policy, which is under review later this evening by this board. And we have upcoming workshops in English Language Arts and foundational skills assessment planned for next week, as well as a leadership retreat focused on engaging with the strategic plan in service of student learning. Finally, grant-funded professional learning activities included a team of six leaders and teachers attending PBL World in California. This is our second consecutive year sending a team to that conference, and nine leaders participating in the 2025 Principals Academy Law Workshop last week. It's been a really rich summer for our students and for our staff. Unless anyone has questions about our summer programming, I can move on to my second update. But first?
Any questions?
Questions about summer programming?
Leila has something to say.
I was curious what the Principals Academy Law Program is, if you could expand.
Sure, yeah, that's run by our attorneys, Drummond Woodsum, and it's something that we've attended annually for three years now as a leadership team. They provide a comprehensive overview of all things legislative and law-related for school and district leaders. It's really a critical time for us to know what we need to know, this year more than ever, to make sure that we're heading into the school year equipped to comply with the law and to communicate effectively with our faculty about changes in the law and legislation.
Thank you.
Go ahead on to the second part.
So I also have a brief update about the reporting of graduation rates in the state of New Hampshire. The New Hampshire Department of Education, NHED, has announced changes to how graduation rates will be calculated following an audit conducted by the U.S. Department of Education, U.S. Ed. As part of this audit, U.S. Ed determined that New Hampshire's adult education diploma programs have different requirements than traditional high school diploma programs. Consequently, U.S. Ed has directed NHED to discontinue counting students who earn adult education diplomas in the state's four-year and five-year graduation rate data. In response, NHED has plans to report two separate metrics going forward. First, the graduation rate calculated using the revised parameters mandated by U.S. Ed. And second, a completion rate, which will be a broader metric that includes students who earned a high school credential through an adult education pathway. As a result of this change, we anticipate that Lebanon High School's reported graduation rate will drop slightly, even though our overall very high completion rate will remain unchanged. We've updated our local reporting mechanisms to reflect this shift. This includes revising the information page, the LHS school profile page that accompanies high school transcripts, to highlight the completion rate, which we believe is the most accurate measure of our students' overall success. We recognize adult education as a valuable pathway for a small number of students each year, offering meaningful opportunities for completion and progress into the workforce. We'll continue to monitor NHED's implementation of these new metrics, and we'll keep the board informed of any additional updates. I would imagine you might have questions, but possibly not.
Amy? Leila, go ahead.
I do. Can you perhaps expand upon why the removal of this metrics, what that could mean for us as a board? I imagine that these metrics are often used to also measure what funding. We do know that, thanks to the Jack and Dorothy Byrne Foundation's generous donation, that there is a community understanding that adult education is not being supported. Do you think that this change in observing the metrics puts that program kind of further in peril for the board's budget?
That's a great question. I would say, you know, the main implication for districts around this change is there are certain accountability metrics that U.S. Ed mandates be tied to the graduation rate that's calculated using U.S. Ed's parameters. It's most significant for districts that have schools that are at risk of being identified as schools in need of improvement. We don't anticipate that outcome for our school, so thankfully, we hope, we do not anticipate that that will be a big impact for us. Aside from that, NHED has been relatively reassuring to us that they intend to emphasize completion rate, which will include adult diploma pathways. As far as the implication for adult diploma programs, we don't have an, my understanding is not that there's a press to change the completion requirements, to, for example, bring those adult diploma programs in line with so that they would be comparable to traditional high school diploma pathways. The very intent of a productive adult diploma pathway is to provide an alternative, and in service of that, the credit requirements are understandably different, as I think they should be. So if anything, to me, this, it's an opportunity for our community to stand strong in our belief that for a small number of students, an adult diploma pathway is important, and it would be beneficial for that opportunity to continue to exist. So in other words, I don't think we should change our stance around adult education and adult diplomas as a pathway based on this change.
I just wanted to.
I just wanted to clarify, our adult education program here in Lebanon is designated for 18 over and for English language learners. This adult education diploma reference in our graduation rate is for our 16-plus students, so kids that have turned 16 and previously went to the program at Claremont. We now know that Claremont has closed, so I think we have probably six or seven kids in that pipeline still who will be working with the Keen Adult Diploma Program to finish that pathway. But it, there's two different adult education programs for that.
Thank you, that helps.
Any other questions for Karen? Okay, all right, thank you very much. All right, this brings us to the Director of Technology and Tyler's update.
Hello. For the last few months, the IT department has been hard at work redesigning the district and school websites on our new web hosting platform, Final Site. In addition to giving the sites a new, modern aesthetic stemming from feedback we've received from the community and via our communication survey, we focused heavily on ease of navigation and streamlining access to frequently sought-after information, as well as optimizing the site for mobile users. Additionally, having consistent design and navigation across school sites was a priority to ensure the same information is available in the same places, no matter which school site you're looking at. The end goal is to reduce the amount of time parents, students, and community members need to spend looking for the information they are seeking, while highlighting school newsletters, announcements, and updates to be more visible in a way that better reflects and calls attention to all the wonderful things happening in the buildings. The new sites are going live this Friday at approximately 11:00 a.m. Once live, they'll be accessible at the same URLs we're using for our sites currently, for example, hss.sau88.net, mls.sau88.net, et cetera. We've coordinated with Jack Rooney to release a district-wide communication when the sites go live, informing parents and other community members that our sites have a new look and that feedback is welcome, with an included email address to provide feedback to. We recognize that launching the site isn't the end of our work. We will continue to update the district's online presence based on feedback that we receive. In the coming weeks, Jack will also send out a survey specifically to collect additional feedback on the website and help us fine-tune anything people are having trouble with or to add additional information that folks may be seeking. Additionally, in the coming weeks, we'll be launching a companion app to our website. To be clear, the website will be fully optimized and viewable on mobile devices when it launches this Friday. However, the app will provide some additional features, such as the ability for parents and teachers to message back and forth in an instant-message-style chat. This app will be specific to our district, won't be like a generic Final Site or Educational Networks app where you have to search and sift through a list of a bunch of other school districts to find what you're looking for. It will be a Lebanon School District website app specifically. We anticipate that app going live late fall, early winter, so definitely stay tuned for more information on that front. And lastly, I've been meeting with building administrators this week, orienting them to the new site and some basic tasks, tasks such as posting news announcements and calendar events. Dovetailing with our district communication plan, we're focusing on ensuring that newsletters, building updates, and other news events are posted in a consistent manner across the district. So if you're used to seeing newsletters in a certain place at one school, you'll be able to find it in the same or a very similar spot at another school, and that the same type of information and updates are being posted to the homepages of each school. We're very excited for the launch of our new website and to start receiving feedback from parents and the community, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about the site.
I was wondering if you could go into any detail about any accessibility features?
Yeah, absolutely. The site is fully ADA compliant. In addition, we're contracting a, an additional feature to the site called Weagleot, which regularly audits the live site and flags anything that is an issue accessibility-wise and calls it to our attention so that we're able to fix it immediately.
That's great, great.
Any else, anything for Tyler?
Did you design the app? Is that why it's district-specific, or is that like a program to help design a district-specific app, just out of curiosity?
It's, it's part of the Final Site package that we, that we're purchasing through the company. So they're, they're helping us work with like Apple developers and the Google Play Store to actually get a specific app listed for our site. Yeah, it's just part of the package.
Very interesting, thank you.
I'm excited. I know this is something we've talked about at the district PTO a bunch, that everyone is waiting for a new website, so we're excited, and I'm sure you'll get lots of feedback from, from lots of people, so I'm glad that you're willing to accept the fee, but that's coming in.
Yeah, we're definitely looking forward to having everybody take a look, so, thank you.
Tyler, could you just actually show them like the board page and how easily this links to Diligent?
Yeah.
Oh, haha. Yes, I would like to see that, actually.
If we go to the district site up here at the top. There's the school board heading right here, and the header for this might change before we go live. It's a bit of a placeholder right now, but this meetings is what it used to be called on the website, and when you click that, you go right to Diligent, and same with the policies header as well, takes you right to the policies section on the Diligent Communities website.
Great, thank you. Excited. All right, thank you very much. Okay, that brings us to, we don't have any unfinished business, we'll move into new business. So, we need to, we need a motion to approve the $25,000 donation from the Jack and Dorothy Byrne Foundation from earlier for adult education.
I motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Leila.
I'll second.
Second by Richard. We already talked about it. Once again, we are always grateful for their continued generosity, especially for this important adult education initiative. All those in favor? Great, thank you. We also need to acknowledge a $56.50 donation from Pam Easton to be used for school lunch debt. We're grateful to Pam for doing that. And...
Yep, that's...
New business. All right, that takes us to policy.
Well, it's been a summer, friends. Most of the policies, and I do apologize for dumping so many policies on you at once, almost all of them are to deal with changes in the 306s in the switch to competency-based education. I guess, as you can see, the last four on this list, numbers 27 through 30 are for, first reading for withdrawal. Those are because they become redundant once the, some of the others, especially IK, which is number 10, earning a high school credit achievement of competencies. I don't believe we're actually calling it that, but goes, is eventually approved. So I guess the first question I have is, does anybody have any of these they want to pull out for further discussion? And if so, which ones?
I have a comment on JLCF.
JLCF, the wellness policy?
Correct. I have a correction that we need to make based on some feedback from our SWAC committee and the USA DA rep at the Department of Education.
Okay, I have it up, so we can make any changes?
All right, it's under the physical activity, so in the new language, in the seventh and eighth grade, recess attentions are permitted under the discretion of the school administrator. So, whenever reasonable is still...
Sorry, there we go. Four, which section is this? Section, just the preamble of the section?
Section four, and...
That's right.
Yep.
Okay.
So, we need to make sure this, not a recess detention, it's called alternative physically, physical recess activity.
Okay, where, where does this need to...
So you see section four, there's a paragraph before you get to A.
Yep.
And so instead of saying recess detention...
Instead of saying recess detention, they should read...
Need to say alternate physical recess activity.
Alternate physical recess activity.
And then, we can take out the wherever, whenever reasonable, the student is offered individual supervised movement, because they have to be moving during this alternate physical activity time.
They have to be.
They have to be moving.
Okay. Charlie, which should the rest, in addition, the district will promote developing a print? That, that should all stay?
Yep.
Okay.
So, so this came, just FYI, this came as a request from the seventh and eighth grade, the administrators of the seventh and eighth grade teams, that the, under the current situation, we don't have, there's no step in between, you have lunch detention or you have an in-school suspension. There was nothing in between that. And so their suggestion was, we would do this alternate physical recess activity where an administrator will walk around, sort of up, up higher, not where the other kids are doing recess, but walk and process what has happened with the child, so that they are discussing with an administrator what it is that they, whatever their infraction was. They wanted to do this as a step instead of jumping immediately into having an in-school suspension. And so the language that Amy is talking about is, they had suggested some language, we had made some changes, and then we sort of ran it past legal and USDA, and now we're all back up to speed. So, the question you had was, does anybody else want to pull out any other policies from this about any particular, if any, questions or additional comments?
I have questions on three of them.
Okay.
They might be, they may not, I don't know. IKB, IKF, and IIB.
IKB.
IK...
IKF.
Homework, high school graduation requirements, and...
Class size.
Class size.
IIB.
Okay. What is your question regarding IKB?
So, on the homework policy, in the second paragraph, it says, "The assigning teacher will provide a written class homework policy describing how homework assignments may be accessed, blah, blah, blah." So I read that as that my children will be bringing home a piece of paper from each of their teachers, and I just wanted to clarify and ensure that was the intent.
That was the intent of the legislation passed directing us to put this in our policies.
Just in case it's helpful to hear the steps we've taken to address this, and this will be news to our educators watching, but they're going to learn about it on their first day back at, at work. We are going to be asking that a homework policy be sent home among the other curriculum information that will be going home to families in every grade level. I've provided a template for our K to 8 educators who won't have done this in the past, ensuring that if they follow the template, they'll be complying with the policy. All right, but, great. All right, so then IKF.
IKF, my question on IKF was more about less is more. Section two and section B, so A2 and section B literally have the exact same information. I understand that the intent of one is to say one thing and the intent of the other is another, but should we combine them in some way that makes it...
There are significant changes that need to happen to this policy in this current school year, before the end of this year, and so we are taking as light a touch approach to this one as possible right now, because in very short order, we will be going over this...
And we'll come back.
...in a much more detailed way.
But your point is a good one, because that was my question, as, as I read through, I thought, what, why are we repeating? But yes.
So I'm, we, we could invest some time in fixing it, but I'm not certain it's worth, worthwhile, since we're going to be doing a major overhaul of it shortly. But you make a very good point.
Can I follow up to what you've just said?
Absolutely, yes.
So, because of everything that just happened with the legislative season...
Yes.
...we have to do this update, but it's not necessarily the update for each of these policies.
Right, exactly. There's a small update that needs to happen right now, but the, the larger update, because we have to, we have to change it to the proficiency-based language and also change some of the...
Competency-based.
Competency-based, yeah, and like graduation requirements are changing.
And, and this is particularly for most of the in-green font?
Yes, the, the in-green is what is the changes, the red is the crossed out.
Thank you.
And so, the coming changes will actually be to the actual graduation requirements, but those don't kick in until the next school. So, we're, we're going to be able to take a little more time and be thoughtful with it.
Okay.
But we do have to have it in, this policy in effect immediately as it's written, so that's why we're passing it through, even though we know we're going to be revising it again. But if we waited till we revised it, then we would have like this nothing area where we have no, nothing published, so we have to put this one.
I, I understand, thank you.
The other, the other one I had was IIB, that was class size.
Yep.
The first kind of section with the...
That IIB.
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 Yeah. I suspected this would generate some discussion.
The first section where we have the caps of 15, 16, et cetera, et cetera. I don't think any of our buildings use midsemester, and I'm wondering if we should just say something like during the school year or just strike that, because I know the high school's on quarters, the middle school's on trimesters, I, I think that just...
That's a very good point, and I won't go and change the language immediately.
Maybe mid-year.
Mid-year.
Mid-year, sounds great.
Something that, something that works for all. And then, the other question I had about it was kind of two parts. Do all our labs seat 24 students? And then, the question would be, if our max is 22 for grades 5 through 12, shouldn't we just have the same max for our lab classes? Fuck me.
So I think the, the labs actually are fewer, so they're saying that if the lab has a, if the lab requirement is for fewer students, then the max does not apply, because the labs, that's what, so that, that last sentence, upper limits are not exceptions to other limits, and another limit would be a lab size that only can have 16 or whatever. You cannot have 22, even though the policy says 22, because the lab supersedes that.
Or even 25.
Or even 25, whatever it is. Does that make sense?
A little bit confused, because it says you can't have more than 24 in a lab class, right?
Yes, and in, and in D up top, for grades 5 to 12, we do have an allowance of up to 25 for new arrivals.
Right.
But state statute says no more than 24 in a lab class.
Right. So why wouldn't we just make it match? All our lab classes are 512 and just 24.
But all our classes are not lab classes.
True. Doesn't matter. I think it would simplify it. Then my third question on this policy, whether or not any of our classes are at these caps buildings.
As we are still continuing to do enrollments, you will have a class size report in September when the buildings come to present. They will give you what their class sizes, classes that are at capacity, and then I ask to do that ones that may be smaller class sizes, so we can have a better look at the implementation.
So, sorry, just before we get to you, Jessica, do you want the, do you want to clarify that language now, or are you okay with the policy as it is and we work to clarify like what it, because I, I think we, I don't know exactly, we, it's going to take a minute to think to WordSmith what we're trying to figure out.
Yeah, the, the only thing I was really concerned about was midsemester.
Right, right, okay, that's fine.
Fine with it the way it is.
I do have a question about, actually, I'm rereading this, and how many additional do we want the new arrivals numbers to be? Because for kindergarten, it starts at 15, and we can add 3 to 18, but then in 1 and 2, it's 18, but we only add 2 to 20. In 3 to 4, it's 20, we only add 2 to 22, but then 5 to 12 again, it's 3 again, 25.
I talked about that before, and we did that because of the, what we, what we wanted the upper limit to be, made it determine, the upper limit to just determine what we were doing, so I think that was, you know...
Correct.
Do we want to entertain a change of the 25 to 24, or just...
I think we should leave it like this.
24 for labs and 25 in general.
And then, I think once we get our class sizes coming in, as you know, this incoming ninth grade class, I think we potentially are nearing 175, it's going to be one of our biggest classes, so I think this is a number that we're going to need to continue to kind of look at and plan for for the next four years.
Okay.
Jessica?
Thank you. So, I, I guess, more generally, I'm, I'm still trying to remember slash understand what parts of this policy are mandated versus are out, sort of state mandated versus are our choices, partly because I think item 6 says standards as set by the... our choices, partly because I think item 6 says standards as set by the state in Ed. 30614, colon, but there's no following.
Right. We, we took that out because I think the 306 is actually up there with their weird teacher ratios, where you could have class sizes of 40 in certain classes.
We took it out?
We took out, if you'll see there, because they changed their 306s, the red one was the old 306 language. The new 306 language is different. So, we are choosing partly because we wanted a class size policy. Also, as we're nearing towards an open enrollment state, we need to be able to have a class size policy that we can look to, to make sure if we were to accept a student or not. And I also use this as a guidance for tuition paid students from Vermont who look to come in, so we had 2 from, for 9th grade. I needed to go through and make sure that the 9th grade classes would not go over capacity.
So, to answer what I think is your question, is the state is not, not making recommendations. They're not making requirements. They're saying you can do this, you can do this, you can do up to this, you can do up to this. We can set our own requirements, and we're setting them lower than the recommendations that the state is making, because they're just recommendations and we don't want to follow them. So, we're, in order for us to be able to do all the enrollment things that Amy was talking about, we have to set limits, whatever those limits are.
Okay. So then, thank you. So, one thing would be, I think that item 6 probably is end in a P.
Yes, I just changed that right now.
So, that would be one thing.
Thank you for pointing that out.
But I guess, if, if the goal here, which I, I understand, is to create a class size policy, sort of set that. The language in the first paragraphs, I think, could be adjusted, because currently it reads that we direct the superintendent to work with principals in attempting to establish a reasonable and equitable not to, not to following. I'm, so I'm unsure if, that, that to me reads fairly fuzzy. Are we saying this is our limit, or are we saying we'd like you to kind of try?
Well, I think this is our limit, but as I said, if there's a student that enrolled in a math class, and that was the only math class that we had, and they were at 25, I would not take that student away from that opportunity to go to 26, and this would not set up a situation where we would have to hire another teacher at that last moment, or the teachers could be asking for additional classes.
Got it. Thank you.
And that's why I, my intention is, so you'll have the beginning of year, class size report done by the building levels, we'll have the midyear and end of year to see where we are. And we, as I said, we have our enrollment study, so now we're knowing what grade levels are going to have those high blips, and that we'll have to schedule and plan for.
And are we, is the, are our expectations about enrollment reports, I can't remember if those are, are placed in a policy anywhere, or if that's just current practice, reporting on?
It's a practice, and then from here, like you said, midsemester, you'll have from there. And so, as I, you weren't here in the beginning, going forward, in the beginning of the year, the principals are going to be presenting their academic goals, class size reports, midyear, we have our midyear strategic update, we can do that as well, because they will be here, and then we'll do the end of the year as well.
And the last paragraph of this policy, so class size report shall be made to the school board twice a year by the superintendent designate in August, and then, and a midyear report, and then we're also going to do it at the end of the year, so at least twice a year, and there'll probably be more.
And one other piece, there is a policy that will go to our next policy agenda, and it's a policy allowing intra-district transfers. So, we have two elementary schools, so if we had space in one set elementary schools, parents could say, I would like to go to the elementary school, they'd have to provide transportation. So, again, this will allow us some guidelines to say, what is that space and what does that mean?
Thank you.
Amy, I notice that you said you're letting us know after the beginning of school what the class sizes are.
Yep.
This policy tells you to do it before.
In August, so we may want to put, we may want to put it September, as I've learned for the, they're changing, changing schedules, parents are, are-
So, so to change the language from in August prior to the school year to in September, immediately after the beginning of the school.
Yep. That would be great. And for that meeting, it would allow sometimes kids to change their schedules to drop and adjust.
All right. Are there other concerns of other ones in this group?
I was curious about policy IMDA. I know that because this is also the patriotic exercises policy.
Oh, yes.
If that, particularly as, you know, we actually don't have as much time to be clear on this, because in accordance with federal law, like September 17th, so this is coming up very quickly on the school year, are we, does, does this policy lean on the principals to be overseeing if these things are? I, I just, I feel like I'm not terribly upset that it's vague. I'm just, if I were to also look at this as a parent, I am terribly upset that it's vague, but as a board, I see the strength of it being vague, to allow for how our educators choose to have this policy, so.
Very rarely, hopefully very rarely you'll ever see the Department of Ed dictate a curriculum, so it does give the operational flexibility of our districts to kind of come up with these activities. Actually, Karen has spent the last couple days of talking about civics and patriotic exercises with some faculty.
Indeed. We, there's been a law in place for several years now requiring civics instruction K through 12. We were doing, had some planned work already with the K to 4 team to amplify our alignment K to 8 in civics, and we, I tasked that team in anticipation of this policy moving forward with addressing the requirements of the policy, and they've come up with a bank of activities that are recommended regarding each of these requirements, and we will leave it for the moment in the hands of building leaders and their teaching teams to decide which of the recommended activities to implement for each of these requirements. Further, we've connected with our facilities department around the display of flags to make sure we're in compliance, and thankfully, the American Legion, I gather, donates us, flags to us to meet that need. Is that helpful?
That is for the general, for I'd say, 3 out of the 4. I was curious, and just because it's in green, is General John Stark Day a new thing for this district?
Yeah.
For the state.
For the state?
Yeah, this is a state mandate.
As well as this, yes.
So, it, the, the language of the requirement is reflected here in a manner befitting its importance, and I feel confident we'll do something in a manner befitting its importance.
And actually, General John Stark Day, that's been in the books for quite some time. It's, but that's the longest of the laws, actually. Just nobody knew it that it was there, but it is.
A lot of the legislation here that's reflected in many of the policies you'll see this weekend, next week, is actually a revising of existing law, we learned at our law conference last week. But it has the effect of drawing our attention to these existing laws and amplifying our, our understandings about what we ought to be doing. And thankfully, our 4th grade does a mini-unit on General John Stark already. How convenient.
Very convenient, we love it.
They will be making small school announcements this year, following that.
Thank you, Karen.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the Constitution Day and Citizenship Day were also federal laws signed quite some time ago.
Mm-hmm. They were.
So, now, now they're all in this policy together.
Kevin was going to say something.
What a happy little family.
Kevin's?
Is the size of the flag new, or is that existing law?
I think that's a new.
I think that's, that was the first I'd seen.
That's a new for the assembly, so they have to be at that size. We do have flags in the classroom as well, and those can be smaller sizes.
That's actually bigger. That's, the 3 by 5 is not that big, but, yeah. Okay. Any other questions on any of the other policies? All right, Richard, you're on for a motion.
I just had one more thing to add about JICJ, our cellphone policies.
Right, of course.
Yeah. So, next week, you will see updated language for the handbook for the high school in regards to consequences for that policy. The middle school already has them, because they had an off and away policy this year as well, so you will get them, hopefully, I'll get the packet out Thursday evening, Friday morning to you guys, so you can see those changes to the handbook, and there'll be changes to the programs of study that you will need to review as well.
And if you have a high school student, they got it today anyway. They got all those changes and all those, so their students have already seen it, parents have already seen it for high school.
And the, the legislation does allow us to give the, the schools individually their own, their, the ability to set their own kind of consequences for violations of this, and, and so, we're, we're not taking a, we're taking the lightest-handed approach we can with, with this policy in an effort to allow more tailored to specific age group directions of ways.
And in response to public comment, I will bring it up with our middle and high school in regards to communication with coaches, hopefully never using Snapchat again, about, and how for the driver's ed, so we can make sure we have those communications that can happen. I know the announcements will, but there probably, if I speak with Tyler, there's probably a way that we can organize that, probably through our system, Google system.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
Can I get a motion to approve for second reading policies listed under item 10A1 through 26 for, to send for, to, for second reading, ooh, is it next?
Next week.
Next week?
Mm-hmm. So moved.
Good job. All right. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Joe. All right. Any additional discussion? No? Okay. And, as amended, obviously.
As amended, yes.
Yes. Move those forward as amended. All right. All those in favor? Posed, and, all right. Thank you all very much.
And a motion?
Sorry. Oh, Tia.
I did.
Tia made the motion, and Joe seconded.
I'll, I'll make a withdrawal motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I also move that we, we withdraw, or we send policies 10A27 through 30 to next week's meeting for second reading, reading to withdraw.
Okay. And met motion by Richard, second by?
I'll second.
Tia. Okay. Any questions about those? All right. All those in favor? Okay, great. All right. And then, last but not least?
We did review E-triple-B accident reports, and we suggested no changes.
Okay. We'd have to accept that?
Yeah. Just approved, yep. And then we'll make it official.
A, a motion to accept that EBBB has been reviewed.
Okay. Motion to accept the review of EBBB by the policy committee. Can I get a second? Second by John. Right. All those in favor? Excellent. All right. We'll go back to public comment. Is there any public comment in the room? We'll open it back up. Is there any public comment online?
There is no public comment online.
Okay. Great. Committee updates. Finance and Facilities next meeting is August 18th at 4:30 PM at the SAU. Policy Committee met on August 4th. You see the results of that before you.
Sorry.
The next meeting is September 8th at 8:15 AM. Education Committee's next meeting is September 11th at 12 PM at the SAU. Personnel Negotiations is meeting tomorrow with lawyer, so a non-meeting tomorrow, 8 AM. Student Wellness Advisory Committee's next meeting is to be determined. HACCCC's next meeting is October 1st at 12 PM at HACCCC. Area Committee's next meeting is October 21st at 6 PM at Plainfield Elementary School. School District City Task Force, we're waiting for the new city manager to board, so we'll have that meeting, and once they do, we will have a meeting with, and school board, but that's on hold for right now. Housing Task Force, do you all have a next meeting date?
It's Monday, and I won't be at it, so I will make sure I get you all an update.
Okay. Great. Only we had someone else on the committee.
I will be there. I will hear my John with an update.
Oh, look, we do. All right. Great. Thank you. Okay.
The Student Wellness next meeting is, is September 4th.
Oh, great.
They met last week, I wasn't there, but just kind of discussed overall goals for the year.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. All right. Do you know what day they met last week? Thursday? Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Okay. So, we are going to go into a brief, non-public.
I'll make a motion to go into non-public under 91A3 Alma 2L.
Okay. We do a roll, a second by Richard, motion by John, we need a roll call vote. Kevin?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Richard?
Yep.
Tia?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Joe?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Leila?
Yes.
Okay. We'll head over to the office, and we'll be back.